Board of County Commissioners Board Work Session, it is Wednesday, August 3, 2022. It is 1:08 PM. This is a hybrid meeting, we're in Building 1, Room 280. For public virtual attendance, you may follow along on Thurston County YouTube channel. I'm Carolina Mejia, I'm the Chair of the Board, joining in via Zoom. Commissioner Ty Messor will be joining in the boardroom soon, but he's joining via Zoom right now. And Commissioner Gary Edwards will be joining a little bit later. The topics on today's agenda is the Lake Management District Administrative Rules Briefing. It's an informational session, and we have some members of the public who are from the Lake Management District Steering Committees for both Lawrence Lake and Long Lake. And I'm not sure, I apologize, I cannot clearly see Barry, I think I see you, but if we could do introductions of the members that are here, and then we can proceed on. I apologize, I really wish I could be with all of you there today.
Ma'am, that's okay. Good afternoon, my name is Barry Halverson, I'm with the Lake Lawrence Lake Management District. With me today, or on virtual link, are Frank Utic, to my left here, Kim Nelson, back row, Kirk Cleveland, back row, Rick Neams, who's the President of Wild Air HOA, back here, John Carpenter, who's a member of our lake over here, Jim Beal, from Lake Lawrence, Doug Carmen and Linda Wolf, Doug Carmen right here, Linda Wolf from Long Lake, along with John Woodford, right behind me, from Long Lake. I believe we have Pamela Halsener-Fuke from Patterson Lake on Zoom, and Gary Whitely, and Diane Pearlman, and Kathleen Nolte from Offutt Lake on Zoom. Paula Lo cannot be with us today, as she has jury duty in one of your buildings right next door over here, and there's others that are watching from home. We are here today to discuss the Lake Management District Administrative Rules that were unilaterally imposed on the Lake Management Districts with no collaboration by the staff. We hope you have had time to review the read-ahead packet we submitted to Ms. Caldwell last Thursday. Thirty minutes is not much time to cover such an encompassing topic, so we would ask that you hold any questions until the end. Next slide, can we get the slides up, Jamie? Hello, Commissioner. I just did introductions, I'm sorry.
I heard all that, thank you.
Thank you, sir. There's a packet in front of you also, we'll be referencing the colored tabs in that, it's the same briefing and presentation we provided to Ms. Caldwell last week. Okay, this is the agenda we will follow. Note, there's backup slides here, we will only be addressing those as a reference point to information covered in this presentation. Next slide, please. As an overview for this presentation, we would like you to know that the first bullet, a litmus test needs to be approved by you to guide staff in spending our precious revenue. Bullet number two, we disagree with the dictated Public Works Admin Rules. They are contrary to the RCW, which specifically states that property owners can embark on a program of lake improvement and maintenance. It does not state that government can embark on a program of lake improvement or maintenance. There is specific intent behind this statement, and it implicitly implies a citizen-led effort with help, that means management from local government, not directed by local government. The fourth bullet here, all Thurston County Board's rules are either approved by you, the Board of County Commissioners, or their respective Board themselves, not at county department, as was done with the Public Works Admin Rules. As you reviewed the backup slides, you clearly saw this in Slide 13, that's the green tab on the information that we provided you. It's very detailed, and goes into all the different things that are in the Public Works Admin Rules that are contrary to what even the county respective boards are doing. There's a packet there underneath your paper, oh, you got it, sir. On the fifth bullet, no other Lake Management District in the state, in the state, has its rules written and approved by a department. Again, as you reviewed the backup slides, you clearly saw this, a backup slide number 12, at the orange tab. Like I did with the budgets for our Lake Management Districts, we went back and researched all the Lake Management Districts in the state, and got their information off their websites and stuff, and we put that in the bullet chart, the Excel spreadsheet that you see there. The sixth bullet on this slide, we have rewritten the Public Works Admin Rules with recommendations we believe achieve the structure and collaboration all parties are looking for. The seventh bullet, we are asking that these rewritten rules be adopted by you as the standard for all Lake Management Districts in Thurston County. And finally, we are also going to request you and Public Works require all Lake Management Districts in Thurston County to implement a charter that complements the admin rules. Frank Utic will now discuss the rewritten Public Works Admin Rules.
I think we forgot to introduce Kim Nelson also.
Oh, yeah.
I'm sorry.
I think he got me.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners, for your service and affording us this opportunity to speak with you today. My name's Frank Utic, I'm a volunteer steering committee member for the Lawrence Lake LMD. I have served in this capacity since 2006. The next two slides will address an aspect of the Lake Management Districts that are important to us and should be important to you. Last week, Lawrence Lake's LMD conducted our quarterly meeting with an attendance higher than any previous meeting I have ever been privy to, unfortunately void of any county representation. Those present conveyed a sense of concern and urgency about the future of our LMD, particularly the imposition of the new administrative rules. In effect, you have rallied the troops. Some of this sentiment was shared with you by a series of recent emails. Accordingly, I will address the new administrative rules and our principal concerns regarding these rules. Following the flow of the slides, item one, I can relate with certainty, the steering committees of our two remaining LMDs affirm the need for administrative procedures that are mutually agreed to by the stakeholders. Unfortunately, the county staff's new rules contradict 35 years of a successful citizen-government relationship regarding lake stewardship endorsed by RCW 3661. Item two, these rules were imposed unilaterally, citizen input was explicitly denied. After their posting, we were told feedback was welcomed, but the rules were not open for discussion. Feedback was provided by the LMDs in any case, but no response has been received to date. County staff also conveyed that these rules have not been approved by the Board of Commissioners. To summarize, these new rules are de facto changed to 35 years of successful LMD operation, not approved by our elected commissioners. Moving forward, LMD leadership from our two remaining LMDs collaborated to draft a rewritten version of the rules that are in consonance with the intent of RCW 3661. We use the county staff's version as a baseline and acknowledge agreement with most of the county's rules. We welcome an opportunity to jointly collaborate on a mutually agreeable set of administrative rules, but we emphatically request Board approval of the resulting rules. Next slide, please. This slide presents our principal concerns regarding the new county rules. In your package, we provide a more detailed comparison of your rules and our recommended changes. These are provided as the yellow tab there in Slides 15 through 18, it's the yellow tab in the handout you have. And these have been previously provided to your staff as quote "feedback." I can stay with confidence, item one is a paramount concern to our constituents. This is iterated repeatedly in the emails you recently received, previous presentations to you and your staff, and the unanimous discontent at last week's LMD meeting. In summary, relegating the existing steering committee model to one of advisory-only status contradicts 35 years of successful cooperation, and it is unacceptable to us. Item two codifies strict discipline for fiscal matters. While details are provided in the backup slides, the overarching sentiment is, this is our money, it is not a tax, it is a voluntary self-imposed fee to responsibly steward our lakes, consistent with RCW 3661. We expect transparency, we expect accountability, we want to retain decision authority to responsibly spend our money on stewardship activities. Item three, analogous to fiscal accountability is technical accountability. We acknowledge best practices sometimes fail despite efforts by all hands to react to emergent lake conditions. But technical accountability includes numerous functions in departments involved in the planning, contracting, monitoring, testing, budgeting, and execution of the approved work plans. In summary, holistic support by all, culminating in boots-on-the-ground efforts by our assigned ARS. Actions must be consistent with the approved annual work plan and budget with steering committee visibility to deviations from the plan or budget. Item four, another contentious issue is the steering committee election process imposed by the county's new rules. We provide specific comments to define lake-specific election processes in each LMD's charter, the topic next on our agenda. However, I'd be remiss at this forum without stating that a county staff member should never have the authority to unilaterally remove one of our elected steering committee members as provisioned by your new rules. This has emerged as a lightning rod issue. I direct your attention to the bumper sticker words of state government regarding lake stewardship at the bottom of the slide. In closing, it is my honor to serve with the many volunteers bent on lake stewardship, some of whom took time off from their job and family today. It is my strong opinion, we have spent an inordinate and unavoidable amount of resources on this topic, resources better spent on lake stewardship. Let's fix these issues together and systemically. Doug Carmen will now discuss the proposed LMD charter. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Doug Carmen, Chair of the Long Lake Management District Steering Committee. While I have volunteered on the committee for 23 years, my family has been on Long Lake since 1931. The Long Lakes, the Long Lake and Lake Lawrence Steering Committees have been organized a little differently over the years, and this could be the cause of some of the frustration on the part of staff. Long Lake is operated under a formal charter with ground rules which detail our formation, our goals and objectives, LMD membership broken out by neighborhood, steering committee membership with equal neighborhood representation, officers and duties, nominations and elections of officers, meetings, subcommittees, authority of the steering committee, and how to amend the charter and ground rules. This charter has functioned very well over the years, therefore, we have taken the Long Lake Charter and constructed a template for all current and future LMDs to use to tailor a charter that fits their needs. Lake Lawrence has already begun work on their charter, and the LMDs currently going through the formation process are doing the same. This will create uniformity in the LMDs and hopefully reduce the frustrations felt by staff. Next slide, please. We believe that staff needs to understand how you want them to work with the county's LMDs, and a letter of intent from you would go a long way in providing staff guidance and direction to implement your vision for LMDs. I provided you with a revised suggested draft letter of intent for your consideration back on May 31, 2022. However, as of this date, I have not received a response to my request. We strongly feel that staff is getting the wrong guidance and does not understand your vision for LMDs. Without this letter of intent, we feel these issues will continue, therefore, we have included it again here as part of this briefing for your consideration. Barry Halverson will now talk about systemic budget issues. Next slide, please. Issues will continue without firm guidance from you, as Mr. Carmen just stated. The rewritten administrative rules and the letter of intent just briefed will provide this guidance and resolve these issues. As stated in my overview, the Board of County Commissioners needs to also direct the staff to use a litmus test to charge cost to LMD funds. A more complete list of specific budget line items pertaining to these categories was contained in the background information provided as a read-ahead. Next slide, please. These are the concerns that we have and that staff has. We have heard numerous times over the course of the last few months that staff feels we, the current LMDs, have acted in a contentious way when dealing with them. That is staff's feeling, there's little we can do about that. Staff has communicated this to you, sometimes making allegations that are not true and cannot be supported with facts. We have always acted in a professional manner, any issue we have brought to your attention or staff's attention has been supported with facts and supporting documentation. We say accountability, staff says contentious. We acknowledge that we have attempted to hold staff accountable for the actions they take that our members do not feel are right, and there have been several major budget issues where staff has acted unilaterally and given us no choice but to hold them accountable. That is one of the reasons we have the support of our members, and why they have not been coming down to Board of County Commissioner meetings to complain. We have been able to prevent that by showing our members that we are working hard to ensure their precious dollars are spent wisely, and in accordance with the standards normally applied to Lake Management Districts across our state, and in accordance with RCW 3661. Staff has also claimed that the Lake Management Districts have acted in a manner that puts the county at risk. This is just not true. Our Lake Management Districts have existed for over 35 years, and the county has not been at risk once. That should speak for itself. These areas of risk the storm and surface water manager keeps bringing up are not areas of risk at all. Most are easily explained, some are absolutely not true, and others are more hearsay and innuendo than anything else. If these concerns cannot be worked out, it may be time to hire a mediator to bring all sides to the table and work through them. I attempted to get the county manager to sit down with the Lake Management Districts and staff a couple weeks ago to discuss them. He gave me a one-word answer, no. Next slide, please. Commissioner, just like we did in March of 2021 with a list of recommendations, this is our list of recommendations to move this forward. You approved the revised admin rules, if that means you have us work with Tim Wilson to do that, okay. We have never objected to that, but there has to be some reasonable expectation that our primary goal of directing the funds and efforts of the Lake Management District be achieved, and elections controlled by staff versus HOAs and committees be changed. All LMDs implement a charter, as Mr. Carmen discussed, we're already working on that. You sign and issue the letter of intent that provides your intent and guidance to the staff. Without that, we don't see things getting better with the staff. They don't know where you're coming from, they see what the county manager is doing, they go off of his direction, they're not going off of your direction. You require staff to implement the litmus test for how charges are applied to LMD budgets, and this is something we can work with Ms. Campbell on, and I think it's important that we do that. Please note that all current and newly forming Lake Management Districts concur with these recommendations. That's all current and newly forming. I understand, you need to understand, Commissioners, that that is very difficult to do, to get four different Lake Management Districts with four different leadership teams and all of their members to agree on the rewritten public admin rules, to establish a charter with a template that's been provided, and to move forward. So we would encourage you to take a hard look at these recommendations, implement them, or have staff get back with them, we can revise them, and we can come back to you with the staff together and discuss any of these in further detail. With that, we're at almost 20 minutes into our briefing, and we've left the last 10 minutes for your questions.
Who's running, who's running? Are you running the meeting, sir?
I don't know. Commissioner Mejia, do you want me to?
Yes, sir, please take over.
Okay, go ahead, Commissioner Edwards, questions for you.
I guess, I don't have any questions, this is in line with everything that I have been saying. So although I wasn't involved in putting this presentation or any of the verbiage that goes into it, I agree with it 100%. I have heard nothing but aggravation from the lake folks for the last couple of years about this topic, maybe more than that. And I think it's very unfortunate that our county manager would not meet with these folks, but I heard the no. The no was a very condescending no, and I really think we need to make some changes. What those changes are, I guess we're gonna have to sit down and have a meeting. I'm kind of aggravated to the fact that here we are, we've given this group a half hour to make this presentation. This is a very major issue for these lakes people, and I don't think it's adequate time, they've done a lot of work on this and condensed this down. I just thank you all for the time and effort that you've put in here. That's kind of my position, is obviously with the citizens here, and I feel the staff has been wronging these folks, and I'll just, I hope that Tim's listening. has been wronging these folks, and I'll just, I hope that Tim's listening to this. I would hope. Do you know? Assistant County Commissioner?
I don't know if they are monitoring this on YouTube or not. Staff were purposefully asked to not attend this meeting. It's an opportunity for the lake management district.
I don't know who they were asked by.
To hear the districts, my understanding that the districts asked for time for the Board to hear their concerns, and that's what this time is.
We provided Tim Wilson and the Director of Public Works all this information, too.
They have it.
And, and we provided them the rewritten Public Works admin rules in advance of sending it to Jamie to send out to you, and we received no feedback on it at all.
Well, I'm certain they'll watch it if they're not watching it right now, so I will definitely make sure they do that. Commissioner Mejia? Questions you wanted to ask?
No questions to the LMDs. I think this is something that we need to discuss, you know, with definitely more time.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, just to follow up on those two things, I mean, we, as you pointed out, the Board of County Commissioners didn't approve the admin rules, didn't even discuss them. We had a one meeting where we tried to discuss them. We got to number one. We got in a big argument about it, and the meeting just went haywire. So we never got past number one. And that made, that made me just, I mean, this Board, this Board typically does not do that kind of minute drafting. The times that we've done it, I can tell you, in my opinion, were a disaster. We tried to, Hutch and Commissioner Edwards and I tried to wordsmith a budget document, if you remember that. Robin immediately nods her head, and it was just, three people is not the way, three people with different points of view is not the way to, to draft, you know, a wordsmith, a technical detailed document. But we, if we have to, we will. I mean, we certainly have that prerogative, and I don't mind to get down, Commissioner Edwards is right, though, we'll need a day, we'll need a whole day to kind of go line by line, rule by rule, debate. First, we debate the concept, and then we debate the wording of the result of what we, what we resulted out of the concept, line by line by line. That's never seemed all that great to me, but this may be a situation where we're not choice. I had a question, I think, for Frank. When you were talking about technical accountability, I'm a little confused, like, what is, what is falling short in your perspective now on that piece?
Last year was a disaster as far as the herbicide treatment of our lake horns, but I mean, did no good. We wasted a little, like, $45,000 with the contractor plus some amount of money with county staff time. This year, so far, are very successful. And we realize that it's not a deterministic, you know, we do the best we can to look at the lake, observe it. I go out with Barry sometimes, as do others, to look firsthand, see what weeds are growing and when we think we can treat. But it's not engineering, you know? I mean, it's kind of weird science. You pick the best chemical and the right places that you think need treatment. We realize that. It's just sometimes going to work, sometimes it didn't. Last year, it did not. This year, it did, so far. In fact, they treated what, yesterday or today?
Today.
Today.
But I think in answering that, Commissioner, that we understand that staff has the technical science background, and they work with the contractors, but we need to work with them, too. We have, I've got more experience in lake management than anybody in the county right now. I mean, nobody in the county is still employed by the county that, that worked when I started working on this, so, but I'm not perfect. I don't know all the science and whatnot, but I've got a different perspective, and if we work together to do that, with the technical side and the practical side, things turn out better.
So, so number three, technical accountability, more like collaboration on technical decision-making? Is that what you're saying?
She needs our support, but she being Paul.
Oh, no.
Right? The contract has to be imposed by ready-to-go time, you know, one March, so that when the weeds start growing, bang, you go. She shouldn't be up here arguing with different departments, trying to get the thing to move from somebody's outbox to the next person's inbox. There needs to be a flow, critical path schedule is what I called it with her. Bang, 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 bang. And it needs to happen, and we should be poised before the growing season. And that's particularly important for certain types of weeds, but whether dependent they may grow that year or not, you know? But there's lots of aspects to her job that she depends on other departments. But the county retains the responsibility overall for that technical execution. There's just not much we can do.
Last year, the problem was the contract was not ready in time, and it was because of the PIVMAC letter that you had all requested a brief. The county manager didn't get it on your calendar. It got delayed. Then that delayed the contract, and then that delayed the authorization for us to do the application, and we were six to eight weeks behind the power curve, and the weeds were already too dense to make the application effective. That's what happened last year. That's what he's talking about, about other departments getting involved and delaying the process.
Yeah.
And, and we understand the PIVMAC, but that should have been taken care of months before, as Commissioner Mejia pointed out. I mean, you got that information for the PIVMAC back in April and May, and it wasn't until the next year in April when you finally got the briefing on it. One thing I'd like to point out before time ends, Commissioner, is Lake Lawrence and Long Lake assessments have conservatively raised over $10 million over the last 36 years since 1986 to care for our lakes. Forty percent or more of that has gone to county administrative costs, or about $4 million. The LMDs currently provide over $375,000 a year to lake health between the two current LMDs. With Patterson and Offutt Lake, that amount will increase over one-half million a year for just four lakes in this county. Money that will not be available if the LMDs do not get established or dissolve in the next three years. And there is a real concern that these Public Works unilaterally-imposed admin rules are going to cause the current existing LMDs to not renew when they come up for renewal in 2025 and 2026. Some of our members have expressed that to you in letters that they have sent to you through Jamie Caldwell and to you directly. One of those members, Rick Neams, the president of Wilder HOA, is sitting in our room today. And it, I mean, people do not want our money, $10 million over the last 36 years, being spent by the county, who has historically had problems with budget, particularly with the LMD budget. And we can go through a list. I've got a list of budget issues since 2015 that we've had to bring to your attention and address because county staff has taken money they should not have taken, or that they may have taken correctly, we're not saying that it was illegal, Ms. Campbell, but that it was unusual. And I will say, it was such as the incident in 2015 and 16 with the LMD vehicle where the ARS didn't check the vehicle and the transmission blew up, and the vehicle had mold left in it because they, they didn't clean it out after they got done doing the lake treatment. And that cost Lake Lawrence and Long Lake over $15,000. Now, Public Works didn't give us that money back. We had to bring that issue to you to get that money back. And I know Ms. Campbell remembers this very specifically, those ER and R costs. The other issue on budget in particular was the interfund cost, which you all have heard a lot about since 2021. There is historical precedence, precedent across the state, across all other LMDs, that indirect interfund cost should not be charged. It should be eliminated from the cost plan, period. And that most direct cost, interfund cost, should not be charged. And then the incident with the vehicles, being charged rental cost for FEMA costs, not central services costs. We brought that to you as well. Public Works refused to entertain our suggestions to reverse it, even though we were told previously in conversations that that's what would be used. It wasn't. And to get it resolved, we had to bring it to your attention. Okay? That is unfortunate. But every one of the issues we brought to your attention was a result of staff not listening, not taking proper action, and maybe it's because they couldn't take the proper action, maybe it was because it had to be a decision by you to reimburse those costs. We don't know, frankly. But there's other issues with direct interfund costs that we do have specifically that need resolution, and we're hoping that you really pay attention and listen to the recommendations we've provided. And we're willing to work with the staff on these recommendations and then bring a consolidated admin rules to you for approval. We are, but the charters we're going to move ahead with. And it may be as simple as saying, lakes, your charters are good enough. Take a look at the template we've provided. We'll do those templates, we'll fill them out, we'll have our Board approve them and our members, and we'll give them to Public Works so that they've got them on file, so they know how we're going to work together. And the Public Works admin rules may not be necessary at all, but we do feel the letter of intent from you, staff needs to know your intent, not the county manager's intent, because there's a problem there between what the county manager is telling the staff to do, thinking that he has your concurrence with that, because he talks to you a lot, okay? And it's not what you are telling us that you want. So there's, there's a problem there, and your letter of intent would go a long ways to solve that problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Barry. Thank you, Doug, Frank, everybody who's here.
Sure.
Commissioner Mejia, anything? Commissioner Edwards, any final comment before we?
I think I'm going to hold final comments until we can get together and come to some type of, through discussion, to solve this problem. It is a problem. I can tell you that these groups are frustrated, these members are frustrated, and I've been told that they feel that the incompetence is intentional to discourage the formation of lake districts or lake management districts and discourage new ones from forming and the ones we've got. So this is nothing new to me. I've heard it for a long period of time. Thank you.
Commissioner Mejia?
Nope. Thank you for the presentation to-
It was very good.
Yeah.
To the lake management districts who came today, and that is all.
A very good presentation.
Very well organized. Thank you, guys, for being here, and there'll be more to come. We're adjourned. Let's pick up at 1:45 with our CPED.